Well, cool. I'd say let's go ahead and make this thing official and let's get this thing started because I know you got a busy day. You're in the middle of a busy day right now and we're making this happen. So let's go ahead and make a podcast. Jesse, welcome to the show.
Let's do it. Thank you.
I'm so happy that we're getting to do this. I mean, this was um kind of like, like I was telling you before we started recording, like presented right at the right time of like, I'm in the middle of, you know, producing some new episodes and everything. So this lined up perfectly. Um, and obviously I'm also sure you've got a ton of things going on right now. So I'm glad we were able to make the time for this and align some schedules here.
Yeah, me too. I'm so glad to be with you.
Yeah. So honestly, I would just love, because again, we're meeting for the very first time. Um, obviously I'm generally familiar with like what you're doing, but whether for myself to really fill me in or obviously the listening and viewing audience, like give me, let's just kind of start off with like the whole elevator pitch of just where you're at right now. I know you're running for Columbus City Council, like give me kind of the full layout of all what's going on in the world, Jesse, right now.
Okay, it is. It's a busy time and it's an interesting, interesting time. Um, you know, I, uh, I've been working the past few years as a legal services attorney. Um, you know, I went to law school at Ohio State, um, and got very interested in that period around housing issues. And actually organized a community project with volunteers during the pandemic where we organized one another to show up and deliver information to tenants who were facing eviction, um, as our world shut down in so many ways, but then our eviction court reopened. And you know, that made me really interested in how do we connect with neighbors and how do we try to do better for them, uh, for folks in need in Columbus? I went after then I, I started working as a legal services attorney at Legal Aid of Southeastern Central Ohio here in Columbus, which is our largest nonprofit legal services organization that helps people, uh, who can't pay for legal help. Um, and I worked on housing issues, defending against evictions, um, and working with tenants who had problems with their landlords not making repairs and advocated for them, tried to get things fixed, um, get some money back in people's pockets. And you know, in the midst of that started seeing how our city had been talking a lot about this housing crisis, um, and housing affordability. But there was more we could do to address that. And too often I had clients, I even had clients who would sort of call city council and say, you know, I'm in a bad place. I'm about to be kicked out of my home and I'm an elderly person and this has been my place for years. What can you do? And I felt frustrated by the full, the lack of full response. Um, and so, you know, then at the end of last year, thinking all this through and then also honestly watching the results of the November election, um, you know, decided, okay, here's a moment. There's an open seat on council. I'd like to run for it. So since November really have been working on building a strong campaign, connecting with people, talking about the future of Columbus and now we're on the ballot, May 6th. And in the midst of all that, I did also change jobs and, and now I'm actually also working as a, a attorney representing people who hold a similar profile to who I was working with before, a lot of low income immigrants, but now I'm working more directly on immigration matters. So that's keeping me busy as well.
Yeah. Okay. So like, I, I guess take me into, you know, obviously you establish kind of where your interests lie. You're identifying like problem areas or issue areas that you're like, okay, what can I do to invoke some change here and how can I do this? But like, walk me through, you know, because it's a world that like I have never been involved in, in the world of politics, whether at a local level or whatever. Walk me through what it was like to even just like get started with a campaign to even get on the ballot itself. Like what is that process like? Like what it was like for you?
Yeah. Well, it is. It's a whole journey and there's lots to learn. And I think, um, you know, as I got started in this, I had an idea of what it was going to be like, but anything, as you know, that you jump into, once you're in it, you think, oh, wow, there's so much more going on.
Yeah.
It's, you know, uh, than one might first expect. But I had some experience that helped because I, um, you know, I've always been interested in campaigns and elections and how they work. And when I was a college student, uh, I was involved in like voter registration and I did canvassing for candidates and trying to understand how to do that. Studied politics in school. Um, and then actually in 2016, I was, um, I'd been living in DC, um, after college, and then I came back to Ohio in the general election and was managing a field office for the Democrats and for Hillary Clinton in, in Dayton, outside of Dayton. So you know, I know something about like how you recruit volunteers to communicate with voters, um, and have kept that in line as I've done this work. But there's a lot that I haven't, you know, that's new to me about, you know, uh, raising money and about connecting with people who make endorsements and about navigating a local kind of county party. And all of those things have been new and journeys and I'm, I'm learning and doing my best and sometimes messing up, but trying to keep moving forward. Because I think it's important what's going on now. And I think voters in Columbus want to see something different. And are concerned about strong leadership, uh, and where Democrats are right now, um, as we see such scary things coming out of the White House.
Yeah. Let's dig into that a little bit. And I'm also going to say like, I've, I've only had a couple like political figures or people involved in the political world on the show. So like half the time, I don't even know like proper questions to ask, right? So if I ask a dumb question, be like, hey dude, don't ever say that again.
No, that's good.
But like, walk me through, you know, when we, when we kind of say like, okay, like people are maybe looking for, maybe I'll say like something different from a Democratic Party at this point in time, or different leadership and stuff like that. Like walk me through kind of what that means to you or what you're even looking for in trying to invoke some of that change and give people something to maybe be excited about that feels maybe a little bit different than how things have constantly felt for a long time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, I think, um, what, one thing that's been great about this process, you ask, how do you even get on the ballot? You know, you start with, you have to collect some signatures. You gotta get, find some registered voters who will sign a piece of paper and say, yep, we will help you nominate you to get on the ballot. Um, and you only needed, you need 250 to run for Columbus City Council. But you know, on my team, we took that as an opportunity, um, to say, let's actually start connecting with voters and we started knocking on doors. You know, there's a, there's a voter file, um, that's, that's provided you can get through the Democratic Party that has lists of every registered voter and where they live and what party they are and how many elections they've run in. So we, we, we pulled these lists and started knocking on doors back in January. And at this point have knocked on, you know, in this pre-primary season of about 4,500 doors and had hundreds of conversations with people. And people are saying that, you know, they're upset at what they see in the White House and they're scared of Trump and they're talking to me about, is he gonna cut Medicaid? Is he gonna cut social security? Um, is he gonna round up my neighbors with ICE? There's a lot of fear. And then, you know, I think in the state house, sort of similar, you know, we're, we're reading about this budget right now. There's a budget process going on. It's cutting funding to public education and we know how, how much pressure our schools are under. And property taxes are rising. People are just talking to me about these things. And I think that they want to see Democrats kind of stand up and fight back and say, you know, that's not right and advocate for solutions. And also like talk to them, you know, I, it's amazing to me. Sometimes I'm talking to somebody at a door and they say, well, I've never heard from a city council member or an elected official in this way. And I'm like, well, I'm not there yet, but like, I'm trying to do that. And I, I feel precious, like I, or I feel, that's like a special moment. It's a sacred moment. When you can connect with somebody and when they are feeling maybe for the first time, oh, somebody in elected office wants to talk to me and cares about what I think.
Yeah. I also feel like there's probably so much value in actually physically giving somebody your time. Like that is such a big deal. Like it's so, I feel like nowadays especially easy to like send out some mass texts, some mass emails, or maybe hang up some flyers and some signage and stuff, but I do feel like there is something uniquely special to like, hey, I'm not just like knocking on your door to say, hey, make sure you vote for me. I'm here, but also like, let's chat and let me try to hear what it is you're looking for out of this entire scenario. So I can then take that and hopefully do something.
Yeah. It's act, you know, it's, it's pretty vulnerable, you know? You're like showing up at some stranger's home and I'm saying, hey, like I'm Jesse and I'm running for city council and can I have your help? Like, can I have your support? And so you're asking for help in that way. And you know, people, um, you know, some people are like, no. Or some people are like, don't talk to me. I'm in the middle of something. And that's okay. But you know, more people than you might expect are like, wow, like, uh, you know, I'm interested in this and they're struck by that act of vulnerability, I think of asking for support and trying to build connection.
Yeah. Now, how does it feel? And this could be a silly question. I don't know who else necessarily is running or what the process necessarily looks like, but like, how does it feel like as a younger person going into this world? Because like as somebody who's relatively on the outside looking in often, I feel like it's almost always this like uniquely special thing when someone younger is running for these positions of any type of any size. You know, I'm 32, so I'm like, I look at anything. Yeah. I, I look at that and I'm like, oh my God, okay. That's incredible. Like, yeah, I want some more of that, you know? I want to see more of that happening. Like, has that felt any sort of like uniqueness or even challenge to you? Or like, does it feel like you're kind of entering even though you, it's the world that you're working in? But like, does it feel like any sort of an uphill battle? Or does it feel more of like an exciting thing? Or is the answer to this like, dude, there's like a dozen of the 32 year olds involved in this. It's not just me, like.
No, I mean, I, I, I'm the, I'm the youngest of the candidates in this, in this race for city council. There are two others. And yeah, I mean, I think definitely, uh, it's a factor being a younger person running. Um, I think it has pros and cons or it depends on the situation. I mean, I'm, I'm now used to the, you know, I'll knock on somebody's door and say, you're 15, you know what I mean? And I was like, well, I'm 32 actually, but nice to meet you.
Double that. Nice to meet you. Great.
And they say, oh, wow. Uh, and that's fine. You know, I mean, we all bring our identities, our moments in life into the work we do. And I'm feel lucky and privileged to be able to be doing it. And I think some people are looking for something new. Um, you know, I think I'm hearing from folks that they don't like the way things have always been done. And so there's a benefit to that. And there's an energy to that that I think is positive.
Yeah. Yeah. I feel like anytime there can be kind of a even somewhat of a uniquely fresh take on something that feels a little bit new, a little bit different, or just unique to how it's been done before. It doesn't always mean that it's better or whatever, or worse. And some people's like, you know, it's like, I think when you can identify that something, the take on something is unique to how it's been before, I think that's valuable to at least look into and figure out, okay, what is this unique take? And just different doesn't always mean scary. It doesn't, new doesn't always mean scary and all that sort of stuff. Now, as two 32 year olds sitting down here, I'm very curious of like, you've touched on a little bit, but like how, not so much just the campaign itself or running currently for city council, but like, did you always have somewhat of an interest in like the political or political adjacent worlds? Like I guess kind of take me back a little bit, like, where does any of this interest first start for you?
Yeah. I mean, I have been interested in this kind of work for some time in my life. And as I mentioned, you know, I was a little kid like interest, interested in politics and, um, you know, I think, uh, in 2008, in the Obama election, I was a sophomore in high school and you know, I said, hey friends, we gotta support Barack Obama. You know what I mean? And I organized these little like high school students for Obama phone banks, like on the floor of the little office that came to town. You know, I mean, that was a cool moment because there was so much invested in Ohio back then, um, which has shifted, right? Right now it's, we've turned into more of a red state, but in 2008, Ohio was a battleground and the national party was investing money. And so, you know, in my neighborhood, there was an office that opened not too far down the street. They opened a little field office in a strip mall. And you know, we had some great, interesting, like young people passionate about this work who had come to town. It was from New Hampshire, from other states, and they had been doing this for months. And I think as a kid, I was like, wow, how interesting. You're like, you're so passionate about what you're doing. And, um, and I think the idea of connecting with people has always been interesting to me. Connecting with people different than you. How do we do that? How do we break through? And I had a taste of that back then.
Yeah.
Um, and then kind of tried to find more opportunities like that in college and beyond.
Yeah. I, I feel like it's very unique to like be able to identify that as a high schooler, right? Cause I feel like in high school, you're just like, oh, okay. I gotta start making decisions of what I want to do with my life. And sometimes I'm being forced into decisions. Other times I'm just kind of like jumping into the world and not knowing what to do and all this sort of stuff. And I feel like that's a very, I, it's just a very cool thing to hear the idea of just like, yeah, I was just naturally interested in community building and connecting with people. Like I feel like that's a very interesting thing to identify at that point in time.
Well, and like an intense project with, like with others. I mean, I was into theater too, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, I think I was like a, like a nerdy gay kid who was like, just like looking to jump into something, you know, and find meaning. I don't know if I would say it that way, but, but like looking back, it's like, yeah, like I had my little, my, my musical theater. I had my school newspaper, you know? And, and then there was this project around the campaign and how cool that, that's such great energy, you know?
Was that kind of like almost the first domino then that fell into place that just kind of continued to lead you down that like community focused route and everything? Like was that, was it almost like an unlock for you where you're like, oh, I'm seeing an example firsthand of like having this thought and this feeling of wanting to be a part of something. Then I saw what it means to take action behind that. And I saw the results and felt the results. Here we go. How do I do more of this? Like?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think so. I mean, you know, I had some of that value like from my parents, my, you know, were interested in that kind of thing and were plugged in, sort of have continued to sort of be understanding what's going on in politics and wanting to talk about that. But I think that's right, that, that in that moment I found something that I kind of kept on following. Later on, I ended up, you know, uh, stepping more into this, you know, I, I went to law school and, um, decided that it felt important to find ways to also be able to like directly work with people, impact people in a material way, you know? They have a problem, you can help solve it. Um, but you know, I, I think that I've always been interested. I mean, I think that those challenges too, I'm working on housing issues in Columbus and eviction court. Oh, it's like people are going through heartbreaking situations. And it's, we can patch someone up. We can do a little triage and help them move on to the next step. But there's such bigger forces at play that are forcing people into this unsafe situation, which is sort of what motivates me now to say, hey, let's work on some policy around this. Let's try to protect people from getting preyed upon by speculative landlords who are going to kick them out of their homes. Like we, we can do more. Um, and so that's, that's sort of where I am now and why I'm excited to sort of bring those two pieces of my life kind of together.
Yeah. Now walk me through like, and, and almost, I mean, essentially just kind of like educate me on just like housing itself in Columbus. Like when we're talking about that, what, what does all of that look like? Is it in a bad state? Is it in a strange state of existence? Again, like a very, we all know that like rent for everything is raising and like, there's a lot of landlords who are just like, eh, sure, let's double the rent and I'm not going to do anything. If you can't pay it, see you later. Like, so yeah, I, I guess just kind of like educate me in the lay of the land when it comes to like housing in Columbus and like what that looks like and more so like the part you're trying to play in it as well.
Sure. Well, big question. Um, you know, I'll say one thing is that this is a city that's majority renters. You know, there's a lot of concern about moving into homeownership and prices of homes to purchase. And that's really serious because we need to help people live in stability, build wealth. And in the United States today, like owning a home is such a core basis of wealth building. But I think about how the city is right now, the majority is made up of renters who are subject to this marketplace that for so many feels just chaotic, right? It feels like you don't have control, rent is going up and that's caused by a variety of factors, including, you know, not enough housing for people, a housing shortage. It's also caused by, uh, you know, a lack of legal protections against rent increases, which is challenging to wade through in part because we live in this state that's run by Republicans who have made it harder for local communities to protect people from rent increases.
Yeah. What wasn't, sorry to interrupt you, but wasn't there something like just last year that was like voted on that like, there was literally, it was something to protect. Like it was like, hey, like you can't raise rent anymore. And then it was voted like, nah, nah, we don't need that. Like let it go. Like, it wasn't that in recently just happened?
Recently there was an, yeah, there was an effort on the local level to create a rent control program and the state legislature passed the law to say, local communities can't pass that kind of law. So it was like, oh, okay. So that doesn't work anymore. Um, you know, and so there's a lot of challenges and, and I also have worked with folks in representing them at Legal Aid who are some of the most vulnerable, who end up getting into a tough situation where rent has been increased or they've gotten a fee they can't pay. And they get an eviction filed against them. Um, and unfortunately, you know, once you have an eviction filed against you, that shows up in all sorts of public records, in screening of landlords. And so we also have a dynamic in the market where we have a sort of whole group of people who are forced into unsafe housing or housing instability in part just because of a single eviction filing, which may or may not have been valid, you know, it might've been a frivolous filing. And so, you know, that's another sort of challenge in this moment. So there's a lot to work on. Um, we also have investors who have come in and, and so, you know, I think about experiences I've had, I think I mentioned with a client who had got, lived in a place for 20 years and then their building had been sold. And they were forced to leave. So we have this set of challenges and a need to help increase affordability. Um, and provide increased protections and provide more housing. I mean, I think those are all the things we want to work on in the next four years in order to help people feel a better sense of security in Columbus so they can continue to make this city home.
Yeah. Now in realistically kind of like any facet of what you've done, whether it's any job position you've done so far, or recent campaign work, or anything well, well before that, like, what's one of your favorite scenarios that you have gotten to work on helping someone with? Like, does one stick out when I ask that? Like?
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, so, okay. So when I started my work at Legal Aid, um, I was, uh, on a project that was focused on doing outreach in immigrant communities on housing issues. So I worked with a lot of these clients who are in the Somali community in Columbus and who had been living in places that had landlords that weren't keeping up their end of the bargain. And so, you know, many of them had in this one property, we saw lots and lots of problems, like ceilings that had started to cave in and you know, it's like a leak starts and they make a phone call and they call the landlord. There's no response. Maybe they go to the office and the landlord slams the door in their face. And they don't know what to do. And it's a community of folks that's quite tight because it's all, you know, a lot of folks from other countries, you know, from, from other countries who have come to the United States. Maybe you don't speak English. And so they started calling me, my office. So I went on, you know, over with, with some colleagues and we would have a number of these meetings. At this Somali community center on the north side of Cleveland Avenue, uh, sometimes with some tea and sit with folks and a lot of older women trying to protect their families. And you know, I think, I, I love the experience of working with these people who had such a sense of, uh, kind of justice. Like they were like, I've come to the United States. I've come from so far away. Don't I have a right to something good here? And it's helpful as a lawyer to have that kind of expectation because you're like, oh yeah, you do. Let's fight for you, you know? And I, it also like reminds me of my like Jewish grandma from, who grew up in Queens somehow, like this, this sort of sense of like, it almost, I mean, she wasn't an immigrant, but her parents were and this kind of like sense of righteousness and sort of wanting to fight for her family, you know? And we ended up working with these folks over many months. We helped them, um, put their rent into escrow, which is something you can do at the court. When the landlord's not making repairs, you start withholding your rent legally by paying it into this office at the county courthouse. And so they, month by month would do this, send their money orders to the courthouse. And over many months, by the end, we had sort of staved away like $20,000 in rent for this whole group of tenants. And ended up because of that pressure and with some additional litigation, sort of forcing the landlord to come and fix up these ceilings, you know, and like get, get somebody a new stove and, and take care of these little, some little things, some big things that were really making life hard for these people.
But also basic things that should have just been taken care of for them to live.
And it's amazing how much work it is, right? To like get something basic done for somebody.
Yeah.
And we got some money back for that. We negotiated all these deals. We got them, got them paid a little bit back out of what they had withheld. And it's like, that felt good, you know? Working with this group of people, getting to know them, people different than me. But getting to feel this sense of sort of solidarity and collaboration.
Yeah. Do you feel like, and, and maybe this is, you know, on a mass scale, but obviously we're talking a lot about Columbus here. Like, do you think just a lot of people in any living situation, any, any housing situation just kind of like don't know almost all of their rights? They don't know how they actually can be protected? Cause I mean, like I would say, if I found myself in any somewhat similar situation, I would be like, I guess I just have to find, figure out how to pay 10 grand a month for this apartment and I have no idea how else to do, like, you, you do just kind of feel stuck in those moments. Like, so a two-part question here, I guess, is like, do you feel like kind of the default setting for a lot of people is people just aren't aware of what options there are to protect themselves? And then the second part to that is maybe what are some of those actions someone can take of like, hey, like, you don't just have to sit and, and take it from someone who's just like not caring about you essentially. Like here's the things you can do.
Yeah, totally. I mean, I think that's right. People often don't know what their rights are in these situations. But I also think, you know, it's important to like sit with, and maybe you've been in this situation. So many people have, they're renters and something goes wrong. There's such a feeling of disempowerment when you're subject to, when you don't like have your own space, where you don't own your space, where you're kind of at the whim of whether or not somebody you're paying the largest amount of money you're paying out of your paycheck each month. They still might not show up to do the basic thing you need. So yes, many people don't know their rights. But also people have, are smart and kind of have like a sense in their bones of like, like there's, you know, I'm going to get screwed. And like, and, and the truth is that our tenant law puts a lot of risk on the tenant rather than the landlord. You have to do a lot of work. You have to pay your rent to the court. Like you have to figure out how to go down there, you know? So there's all these things that are challenging. Um, so that's why it's best to do it with others and try to find legal help and try to work with your neighbors like these folks did. I think that I'm always, as a lawyer, you're like, put everything in writing, you know what I mean? Like that's the key is like trying to document what has happened so that you can then tell a story before a judge or at a court about what has gone on is the most important thing. But yeah, it's a challenge. I mean, and I, I almost want to relate it to like political stuff because I think like, it's true that people, you know, in so many ways in life have low expectations of our law and of our government and have embodied that for so long. And so the challenge of being like a lawyer for low income people in my head relates to the challenge of running for office as a progressive challenger, which is to be able to connect with people and say, hey, uh, I know you've been screwed over in the past and had your hopes dashed, but there's something still we can do together.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and that even kind of makes me think of something, uh, that like, I just even want to say like, I heavily applaud you for entering this world and all of this work because like in complete honesty, like I, I've had to do so much like inner work over the last handful of years of like not, not letting myself be like infuriated when a lot of the really dumb things that have happened have happened.
Yeah.
Uh, or you know, the classic, like you find out a friend or a family member is a little supportive of something wacky and you're like, man, like how do I handle the, and it's like, Man, like, how do I handle the, and it's like, and it's almost this new thing that I had to learn about myself where I was like, wow, like. I get really angry. Now, it's sensible when you get angry at somebody wanting to take somebody else's rights away or not care about another human being like. That's a basic thing to get angry at, you would assume. Um, but I am saying all that to say like, I mean, when I see or hear a piece of news or see somebody share something like. I I've been having to try and like rewire my brain to not have this like immediate instinct of like, I am, I fucking hate you. Like, I'm angry. And so like, and and maybe I'm completely wrong, but like, I just feel like being in that world and like actually putting action behind these things and. Like you said, trying to take a progressive point of view into so many of these different conversations on all levels like. As an outsider, I'm like, oh my God, that seems obviously so difficult and just. I'm having trouble scrolling through Instagram and not getting super angry or letting your emotions get the best of you. So. I don't know if there's necessarily a question in there, but more so just like, I mean, I I just applaud you for like putting action behind these feelings. Of I want to make a difference and also being able to like control those emotions in those scenarios because like. I'm not really like, I'm sitting here and saying like, oh man, I see somebody share something dumb on the internet and I get pretty mad, but like. I'm also not really an angry person, right? It takes something genuinely really stupid to to upset me. Um, so I'm not really an arguer. I'm not, I'm very much like, let's just talk about this as normal people and hopefully we can get somewhere. Um, but I I guess just, I I kind of almost can't totally imagine what. Sometimes it it feels like to be able to like to really be putting action behind those thoughts and feelings.
Yeah, I know. I mean, the emotional piece of this is intense and. I mean, I think you're talking about anger. I'm also thinking about. How much the onslaught of news right now forces people to shut down? I mean, that's another response.
Yeah, yeah.
And so like, you know, there's a lot of work to do to kind of, kind of find ways to get in and sort of open. Somebody up to say, hey, there's something we can do here about this. And we have to be humble, like. The challenges are great and, you know, in this moment, you know, running for Columbus City Council, I'm talking about. How we have to invest in a more strategic way in truly affordable housing. And use our public dollars to protect people and tenants and. We've been talking a lot about transportation, how we can get to zero dollar fare on Coda for people who need it to increase ridership. There's a lot of. Great things we're talking about in this moment. Um, universal pre-K, you know, I'm I'm frustrated with. How we have left that at the same level of funding in the city for years, even as. Our kids are facing greater challenges around, you know. Mental health and the learning loss from the pandemic, there's so much we need to do. But we don't know what's to come, you know? I mean, we don't know what life will be like exactly next year at this time. And so, you know, sometimes the best we can do in trying to do this sort of public work is to say, hey. We want to set our sights high. We know Columbus deserves better and that there are paths to get there. And I want to build your trust that I'm somebody who will fight for you, even if. Things go out of whack and get even weirder, crazier, scarier than we think. We have to figure out ways to set our sights high and keep going and try to build other people up along with us. Because we can only get big stuff done together.
Yeah, how, maybe a bit of a left viewer question here, but. I I'm very curious to hear your thoughts of like, how much do you feel like just like basic empathy plays in all of what you do? You know, because that that's a thing that I've had to again rework in myself of like, I've always been a vastly empathetic person and then. I realized there's certain things where my empathy almost goes out the window and I'm like, how could you think that possibly? I'm I'm so frustrated and you know. But then having to rework like, okay, like, how can I still remain empathetic to? You know, it's the classic like, okay, if somebody thinks differently than you, you know, again, there's some basic things that we probably shouldn't be disagreeing on, but like, you know. It's, it's, it's that sort of thing like, so when you're, when you're looking at just all of this stuff, like, how big of a role do you feel like empathy plays in all of this?
I love that. Uh, it's huge in every part of my work. It's like. Huge and and the way I might phrase it is. Like you always, like, I'm always trying to remind myself, like, the person sitting across from me is real. And has their own set of choices they're making, their own background. And there's stuff I really don't know about the person across from me. Um, I mean, I think about that this more, I was saying to you earlier this morning, I met with this. Family of nine that had come here from Ethiopia via refugee camp in Kenya. And they're applying for green cards and, you know, I asked them questions and. I just, I'm kind of awed frankly by just the sense of like, oh, there's so much of your experience I don't know and I'm. How wild is it that we're sitting together in this room, working on this thing together? Um, so that's a kind of empathy. I, and then the other big thing in this moment is like. Here in Columbus this year, we have a primary for city council. We haven't had a primary for city council in years. And frankly, I think that some kind of in our. Political party kind of establishment, however you might say it, are surprised by the work that I and my team have done. And in terms of how much support we've built for my campaign and are nervous maybe about it, I think. Um, and I wa- I keep trying to remind myself to find empathy for that, right? It's scary to have a new choice. Um, and you know, I think that. To try something different is and to sort of hope for something different, also for the people I'm talking to who have felt like. Oh, this city is sort of controlled by the same set of people and you can never break out of that. I have to say to them, yeah, and I have to have empathy for for their sense of. You can't make it, this isn't gonna work because that's only by respecting where they're at. Can we find a way to build a bridge and continue and build allies?
Yeah, right. Now, you know, talking on things like building empathy and then learning, you know, better ways of communicating with people, the the further you get into different things. When you look back across like your entire journey up until now. If I were to ask you, which means I'm gonna ask you, uh, what do you feel like maybe the biggest? Like lesson you've individually learned out of all of this has been, does something come to mind?
Out of everything I've done in my life.
Up, up to now, is there one big thing that kind of like sticks out to you? Uh, that you feel like you've uncovered either about yourself or about the work that you do or how you can take, bring yourself into this work? Like, is there something that sticks out?
Okay, so I'm thinking about when I, you know, I I graduated from college. I went to a small school in northeast Ohio called Oberlin College. And then I ended up moving to Washington DC right away. I got a job. And it there was some connection uh, with my co- like, I took a class from my college president and then he was. Like, let me help you find a job in DC and I got this job at this big fancy law firm. Um, and it wasn't my thing, like I didn't, I I was confused by the other people. I, you know, uh, very corporate and it wasn't my vibe and. I was kind of depressed and I wrote up on a little sheet of paper, talk to people. In all caps, talk to people. And I set it above my desk because I was like, okay, like, I have to get up out of this stupid little office and like. Find a way to connect with somebody, find a way to be curious about them. And I think that's like the lesson that I think about when I, you know, at every stage of life is like, find a way to talk to people.
Yeah, um, now, this follow-up question, it might, it might lead directly into it, might have a similar answer, maybe not. Like, if I were to ask you what you feel like your why is, what would you say?
Um. I mean, my why, I think about, um. Well, I think about, uh, I've talked about this a little bit, you know? My grandpa um, came from Austria. He was Jewish. He was born in Vienna. He came into the United States in nineteen thirty-eight. Um, you know, the history there is. Hitler gained power in Germany and then in nineteen thirty-eight came into Austria. And his parents saw what was going on and scrambled and said, we have to find a way to get out of here. Um, and raised some money from a relative in New Jersey. Who sent it to them and they found a way out on a train and then a boat and ended up. They came, they came actually through Cuba into the United States. Um, but I think then they got, I think when they got to Cuba, the US official said, you gotta pay us more money. You have the wrong type of visa, you know? It's like, and they like, okay, and they figured out how to do that, you know, and and my grandpa was always this figure in my life. Who I knew as somebody who was very passionate and asked good questions. And was critical, um, but also had a sense of wonder, uh, and sort of like. Uh, loved learning new things about the world and was interested in talking to me and I think about him, you know, as. An example of, this is somebody who, you know, he also like rented his apartment for years in New York City, that's where they live. Um, was able to stay and build this home, um, he and my grandma and, you know, I. I think about being driven by a sense of curiosity, a sense of openness, a sense of. The fact that the world can always be different, better or worse, and we have to like just roll with it and find ways to. To say what's right, um, if we can think of what that is. And I think, yeah, that's a good way to live.
Another two-part question here for you. Um, you know, I I feel like it's easy, especially with a lot of, you know, political climate and stuff like that. It's easy if I were to sit here and. Be like, all right, let's talk about all the things that are wrong and all the negative things and the annoying things and blah, blah, blah. But I would also love to know, like, and I know we've touched on it a a lot kind of throughout this conversation, but. What are you like most hopeful for and most excited for on two different levels? I will say like maybe. Maybe just Jesse's life on a grander scale of kind of what comes next, regardless of, you know, whatever happens with with city council stuff. And then also directly with city council and Columbus itself. So like, when you're looking at those two facets. What are you, what are you hopeful for? What are you excited for?
Well, um, look, I mean, I said I, we've been building this team in my campaign. And meeting so many people, uh, and connecting with so many people. And so I think one thing that I'm just most excited about is continuing to build on that. Um, I think we have the potential to win this race for council and that's why I'm in it. But I also know that as we're doing it, we're building this group of people around us. We've had dozens of people come out and knock on doors with us. We're gonna do it again tomorrow, even if it rains. And I think people are finding their way into this work who have never been engaged in local politics before. Or any kind of campaigns before. And so I'm excited about continuing to build with them and. You know, I imagine getting elected to office and keeping on doing this kind of canvassing and. You know, setting our sights high on policy goals and organizing as we do it, our neighborhoods. To help tell the stories of why it's needed for us to have deeper tenant protections or. Zero dollar fare or universal pre-K and in doing that, we're gonna empower and help support lots of people in connecting. And that's part of a twenty-year project to like take back the state of Ohio. I mean, so, so the challenges ahead are great, but like, that's so exciting that we're, we even have, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be doing this. Right now and excited to see what we can build.
Yeah.
Um, and my per- my personal life, I don't know, or or, you know, I'm, I'm excited to. To keep on learning, you know, um, keep on learning and 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 creating with others.
Yeah, now, I'm gonna probably toss another relatively general question, but that's usually because I think like. Grander answers can often come from general questions, but. You know, you you touched on this a little bit in that answer of like the power of like actual community. Actually meeting people, actually talking to people and connecting with other people and, you know, even. I in in the industry, you know, the kind of entertainment industry that I tend to work in. And whether that's, you know, filmmaking, any sort of creative endeavor, the comedy scene, anything like that, right? I feel like it's very easy for a lot of people to kind of isolate. And especially a lot of creative people and entrepreneurs and all this sort of stuff. So I find myself in a lot of situations where. You know, I've turned relatively, even though I I love sitting on the couch and just watching TV, I've turned relatively into a pretty extroverted person. I'm ready to kind of talk to anybody at any time. Um, but with that, I've often had a lot of conversations with a lot of creative peers who were like, man, like. I haven't hung out with my friends in months. I haven't connected with somebody in months and. And there's been a lot of like smaller kind of community events that I've been putting on over the last like couple of years for, you know, the creative industries that I'm a part of and. The answer or the the feedback that I always get from these things are, I didn't know how much I needed this. And so I say all of that, not to sit and be like, I bring together people, but like more so shine a light on like. I I have learned in those ways that there's so much power in a community, so. And and I also think it's so easy to overlook for some reason, right? It's just like saying hi to your neighbor or knocking on the door or just checking in on somebody. For no other reason other than saying hi. I think there's so much value in that, that a lot of us have kind of. Because everything's so fast-paced and often chaotic and you see people on social media, so you don't really, you feel like you've seen what they've been up to, but you haven't really checked in on them, right? And so there's like this kind of constant uh, battle, I think internally with a lot of people of like. Really being connected to others, really finding themselves a part of community. So my general question after I've prefaced all of that is like. How much true power do you think there is in like building genuine connections and genuine community and not just. Hey, I'm doing a thing just to go and check it out and I hope you're there, you know, whatever. Like, how much power is in genuine connection?
Yeah, I think it's a lot. I mean, I think eh, and I guess I'll say. Um, connection being a two-way street, you know, sort of asking for something, giving something. Being asked for something in return, um, builds relationships, right? That's what builds relationships. And our world is built through that. Um, and we can only imagine. Something different if we're working together on that. You know, I, we've been, you know, I, as we've been knocking these doors, I've been saying, okay, so I'm Jesse, I'm running for Columbus City Council. There are a few things I care about, I want to tell you about myself, but then I pause and I say, and what's the number one issue to you in Columbus? And people are taken aback by that a little bit and thankful for that opportunity, I think. Um, and I see in that moment, oh, we're building some, some relationship. And who knows, you know, it's hard to foster relationships, they take time. Um, but 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 we're starting that work now and doing it on a large scale. Um, and I think that there's seeds of power in each of those connections.
And I think something you said in there is like such an important piece of like, asking someone else how they feel or think. Like, I feel like that is so easy to overlook often because especially again, when you're, when you're trying to get the support of somebody for a thing. It's easy to kind of almost even accidentally almost go into a salesman promotion mode of like. I'm doing this and here's what I hope you think about it and blah, 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 and okay, do you support it? Rather than like, here's my thing, but I also want to hear your part.
Yeah.
And then let's see where the rest of this conversation needs to go.
And I'm sorry to say, but I'm sorry to bring it here, but 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 think about what happened last year at the national level in our politics. Right? Think about this whole drama around Biden and his age and. How he didn't step down earlier and how there wasn't a primary. And how then we had a ninety-day, a hundred-day sprint to try to elect Kamala. We missed out on that work of asking people what they think and, um. You know, I I think it's even, that's a longer problem amongst Democrats because, you know, I remember walking around in. Montgomery County, Ohio, trying to support Hillary Clinton, um. And realizing that we were being sent to talk to doors of people who we thought were solid Hillary people. Um, you know, you do this targeting in campaigns where you say, we're gonna decide who we talk to and because you can't talk to everyone. And I remember thinking, oh, the difference between in this election, between somebody voting for Hillary and somebody voting for Trump. They don't really like either of them, many people, and so there's so much more we could be doing. But instead, we're sort of disregarding people we think are already on Trump's side without realizing that. Actually, there's maybe a conversation to have. Um, maybe there's an opportunity to to flip someone and so. What's cool about doing this kind of local work is it doesn't have that kind of. What's cool about doing this kind of local work is it doesn't have that kind of high profile. You know, expand, like nobody's, there's not big television ads. If you haven't made up their mind already. And so we're able to sit and sort of uh try to persuade people, try to like ask them what they think and then try to respond to that. Which I think is the core of what like good politics is.
Right, right. And that was, that was something that was interesting. That I saw and and again, maybe somebody involved in the world, you're like, ah, no, that makes sense. But like, for me, I was just like, oh, it's, it's, I hadn't. Really quite, I guess, thought about it that way. But like during, you know, all of the the national election stuff like. I remember seeing like some, some comments on a video where there were people who were like in support of Kamala, but like. What they were saying was they were like, the problem is, is like, the Democratic Party didn't give the Democratic supporters someone to actually be excited about. And I feel like that was a lot of people's, at least, I I feel like I saw comments and stuff like that. Kind of all over the place where they were like, I mean, we wanted her, but like, it was almost this kind of. Default setting of like, well, it's super quick. We've only got, you know, like you said, it was a hundred day or whatever it was of like. Okay, cool. Well, hey, it's a Democrat, right? Like, there you go. And like, and a lot of people's, like even being on that party. They were like, well, you you gotta give the people something to be excited about and not just a default setting of support.
Well, and it goes back to empathy, where you have to acknowledge that. The other, you know, your voters are trying to make up their minds and have a lot of things going on and. And have different opinions that don't always align and. Give them a chance to get on board with something. I mean, give them a, try to, try to convince them, you know, try to educate them and and and. Help, you know, go through that process of choosing, discernment, making a choice of their own, because that's empowering and. People don't like being told what to do, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And I I feel like a lot of people's reaction kind of tended to be like, well, hey, just. Just because this one's blue doesn't mean that we're automatically excited. It's like, we might want that one more, but like, that doesn't automatically mean that like. Oh, heck, yeah, like, that's the blue one. Yep, the blue one's what we're going with. Like, and and that was just an interesting. I don't know, an interesting bit of like feedback online to even see people sharing of like. Hey, this kind of sucks for these reasons because like we wanted to be excited, but obviously you didn't get the masses excited because it was just almost this. Seemed like a default setting of just like, here's, hey, here's your person, just go, just go and just hopefully you vote for him and then. When that didn't happen and then everyone's like, how did that happen? And then the people, like you're saying, are like. Well, here's how it didn't happen. Here's like our actual feedback that no one maybe was really asking for or looking for. It was just. Almost built off an assumption of like, ah, yeah, you'll go. It's, it's like, you're all good.
Yeah.
Now, I I guess like, looking forward, because I also know you've got to get out of here at some point, so I don't want to, and that is now. So last couple of things, because I know you got a busy day. So I I guess, is there anything major in this conversation that we haven't touched on that you're like, man, I could not walk out of this podcast? Having not shared this thought or or encouraged this or whatever it may be like. Anything major in your story and the campaign, any of your goals that you feel like we haven't touched on?
Well, we're talking about asking people what they think. I mean, I'm curious from you, you know, in terms of. Have you, have you followed local elections in Columbus or or? You know, how have you engaged on on local politics, if at all?
Yeah, I I have definitely been one of those people that for years, like I was always just on the outskirts of it. I've never followed like super closely. I've never, I've, I've always had kind of like a, I would say like a base level education. Or understanding of everything, right? And because like I moved to Columbus in twenty fifteen. And and I would say only until probably about, what was it, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen and then. Realistically, honestly, just in like the recent handful of years, do I feel like I. More so got myself to a position of like, okay, cool. These are things that like now that I've lived here this long, I don't think I'm ever going to leave. I'm like, okay, I'm gaining more interest in this stuff. So that's why even. At the beginning of this, I was like, I might ask some dumb questions because like, I don't feel like I'm. As involved or as educated to really dig in the weeds with everything. So. I feel like I have like a very general almost viewpoint and understanding. Um, of everything that's going on, but that's also why it was exciting to have you on the show, like when, when our connection even, you know, made this connection, I was like. Oh, this is actually cool because I never really get to have these conversations. I don't get to dive into this side of things. So in that sense, like, it has been exciting to sit and just kind of be, you know, not only, you know, yes, get to know you and your story, but also like. Literally just like firsthand, we're, we're sitting here and just like getting a direct education of like, okay, what is going on? And like, do people actually have protection when it comes to rental things and housing? Because I'm like. I know the basic amount that I feel like most people do. So any, anything, anything else that you feel like we haven't?
No, I, I, you know, I think this has been a great conversation. I mean, I think, um. It's nice to get the chance to reflect on this work from a more personal perspective.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so much of this, uh, you know, I, we go, we've been doing all these forums. We've been in front of people. They've been asking questions, hard questions about policy. Comparing answers and, you know, but at the end of the day, this is a lot, you know, of work about who we are as people. And what our hopes are for our community. And so having the chance to kind of reflect on that is great.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm glad that it felt that way because that was my biggest thing again, you know, everything I just said of like, okay, I'm probably not going to have the best like perfectly formed. Like community, political questions, but coming into this, like the excitement was. Okay, cool. I'm going to get to know Jesse. And and again, the why behind all of this stuff. And yes, we're going to ask those specific questions like, what does this mean and how does this happen and blah, blah, blah? But like, that was, that was my hope for this conversation too, was like. Okay, cool. Like, I want to tell, you know, I'm, I'm sure they're out there, you know, doing, you know, he's, he's doing all these, these different campaign things, like you said, the different forums and conversations. And I'm like. Okay, I hope to get, I hope to give him kind of a different type of conversation of just like, I just, I just want you to tell me about you.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, and I think that's, I mean, that's what I kind of meant to say earlier is just. You know, sometimes that's what actually is most valuable because we don't know what's going to happen next and. You know, we'll advocate for policies and work to get things done. And I think there's a lot we can get done in Columbus. But also this is about trust and relationships and what we can do together and who we are. And so I think this is great.
Yeah. Well, Jesse, I have one final question for you because I know it is time to get you out of here. You got a busy day. Um, I end all of these episodes with the exact same question. So now it's your turn. So right now, we're going to play pretend and, you know, we've been talking a lot about like local Columbus and everything. So whether it's kind of catered towards that or everyone. We're going to play a bit of pretend right now and we are going to act as if everybody everywhere. Is on the other side of this microphone and they can hear you speak. So we got a live mic attached to everybody and you get this one moment to share one thing with everybody. What are you telling them and what do you really want everyone to hear more than anything?
Everyone.
Everybody.
Everyone can hear it. Well. I think, I don't know, I, that's a lot of pressure.
The world is watching.
Um, you know, let's get together. Let's make this happen. We got to work together. And, you know, stay connected. Um, because, you know, I think the, this moment. You know, I'm, I'm working with people who are saying to me, you know, I'm afraid of getting sent back to a dangerous country by the Trump administration. They're getting notices saying, please leave the United States, right? I mean, this is a dark, dark time. And, you know, I think. What to say is like, we have to stay engaged. Um, and we have to find ways to connect across difference. Even if that feels hard and uncomfortable, but that is good. Like that discomfort means we're growing and we're able to find ways to connect and. So, you know, and get out and vote May sixth.
So final thing and and kind of going off of that final note there, where can people go to keep up with you and your campaign and support you in any way?
Yeah, so, um, we have a website, jessevolgaforcouncil.com and an Instagram and a Facebook. And, you know, please look us up and uh sign up to help out, volunteer. We have canvases every weekend between now and May sixth. And follow us and stay engaged. Send me a note. Uh, I'd love to talk.
Jesse, this has been a blast, man. I cannot thank you enough for making the time out of your, you got a busy day when we made a podcast right in the middle of it.
Why not?
Thank you so very much. I appreciate it.